Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming to our June 1st Board's advisory meeting. This time we'll call the meeting in order and have Mr. Slade pray for us.
We just, once again, we're so thankful for your presence here with us, for the way that you provide for us and protect us and how you just take good care of us, demonstrate your love for us, Lord. So, we're just so grateful. We don't take any of that for granted. Father, I think we know we don't deserve it. Father, thank you for providing a measure of safety for our community. Father, thank you for first responders and law enforcement officers that protect us. Father, we don't take them for granted. We certainly don't. Father, we want to thank you for them, the blessing that they are in our lives, and how you have maintained, Father, this sense of security that we enjoy as Rankin County citizens. Thank you for these men, Father, who consistently invest in our community in a number of ways, but specifically, Lord, with our safety. Father, I just want to thank you for the privilege that it is to serve our community. And these men, I know, Father, they appreciate the opportunity of service. Father, I pray that you would bless them in their time of serving, Father, that you would extend the protection around them, the hedge of protection you put around them, Lord, that they would be wise and discerning, Father, and courageous in these uncertain times. We're proud of this of Jesus, and amen.
Thank you, Craig. First up on our public comment, we have the pleasure of having the Brandon Garden Club with us today. Ms. Jordan, come on up.
I am Charlotte Jordan, past president and public relations chair for the Brandon Garden Club. In 2013, Brandon Garden Club was looking for a location in downtown Brandon to put a flower bed with pink flowers. And the purpose was to increase the awareness for breast cancer. And we found that your bed in front of the courthouse annex already had some pink plants, the pink crape myrtles and the pink spyrea, but it really needed a good landscape plan. So, we got together with you and we designed a plan, and you helped us get that bed created. And we have appreciated all these years that you've worked with us to maintain that flower bed. And it is an asset to Rankin County and downtown Brandon. So, at this time, we want to present you with Brandon Garden Club's Commercial Landscape Award for May and June in recognition of outstanding landscaping for what we call our Planet Pink Bed. And we thank you so much for helping us beautify our community. We took a picture earlier, but we'd like to do another one now, and Chuck is going to tell us where to stand.
Great.
So, we'll let him position us.
All right.
We have the president of the Brandon Garden Club, the co-chairs of our Planet Pink Committee, and our chair for commercial landscape present.
Thank you. Ms. Good.
Ginger, Kathy. Ginger, Kathy. You're down, it's white. Let's see. I could do some public comment while I'm up here.
Shelby, you're right, Swak.
Ginger.
Ginger.
Kay. Correct.
Yes.
Charlotte, Marion, Shelby, and Marty. All right.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Mr. Franco. Come on up.
It's better, man. I can be standing up straight.
Good morning. How you doing?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, man.
Okay. Good morning. I know y'all are tired seeing my face. The good news is only a few more months or a month, really. Let me give you an update of where we're at on everything.
How many days are you leaving?
You leaving or something? You had enough?
My computer does not have enough storage for the rain days, but that's a whole nother story. Just briefly, I know everybody's interested in the courthouse, and that's where we're at. But you'll see the latest figures, and I'll go through the costs in just a second. But you see what the cost of the courthouse and the misdemeanor is. So, the total cost right now of all the projects is $24,567,586.04, leaving a bond balance currently of $432,413.96. That's where we are as of today. That could change a little bit, go down a little bit, but that's based on the credits and things that we understand are coming back, if nothing else changes. We met last week, this, no, you get to close when we met last week, talking about scheduling furniture and moving existing items from the existing courthouse over to the new courthouse. We had all parties present. So, right now, we're projecting substantial completion by the end of June, and then that gives a contractor about 30 days to finish his punch list items. But substantial completion means that the project is complete sufficiently to move in, and then that's when the county takes over insurance, operation costs, and things of that nature. And there will be a certificate issued on that date, whether it be exactly then or not. Furniture installation is scheduled to begin July 1, could be possibly sooner. We're trying to organize that for several things to, one, trying to social distance so we don't have several hundred people in the building at one time. We're trying to phase that in. And then the moving of existing items, I think we said on July, the weekend of July 17th through the 19th, so that would be over a weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, with court and operations being held starting that Monday morning. So, that's where we're at on timetable. I wouldn't swear on the Bible for that, but I feel good about that. And then, just the rest of that, just kind of letting you know, the roofing projects, those projects have been complete. We're still working on the CMRLS project. And I think, waiting on, our guy's doing his best to survey. I think he may have already been out there. I need to check with that, and then we'll finalize the chancery renovation. If you want to flip over to that second page, and then after that's the spreadsheet, but that's just telling you where we're at on the cost right now. We do have an add, and I'll talk about that. When we originally designed this project, we had the attorney tables in the construction contract. We took them out to save some money, which we, glad to tell you, we did. We saved almost $11,000 by doing that. But we have to add the microphones that go on those bags, so that's... My audiovisual consultant tells me he thinks that's going to cost somewhere between $13,000 and $15,000 to add those back. But I would like to get, and I don't have the final cost, I'd like to get approval to not exceed figure of $17,000 or $18,000. So, that means it'd be about a net add to the total project of about $8,000 or $9,000. But I need to go ahead and get that done, so they'll be there when they open. All right. Is that on our agenda? All right.
I have something else to add to. If you gave me a payment, so if you'd like to wait, we can do it.
We'll do that. Okay. So, and then if you go down, you'll see the credits, and then you'll see that furniture credit I've added of $10,828. That was directly from taking the attorney tables out of the construction contract and getting them off state contracts. So, and then you can see the other credits, and those credits are based on what we're being told by the contractor to date. And again, it may change a few dollars, but generally, that's what we anticipate after looking at everything. So, you can see, again, the bond balance is $432,413.96. And then I've got the spreadsheet behind there. I do think that they're going to be through by the end, occupy the building by the end of June. They've got paving, the finished course of paving to do is scheduled in two weeks. You know, weather will affect that a little bit, but it shouldn't affect it a whole lot. They can work around the rain there. They've got some concrete work to do, and you see right now, they're doing some concrete. The interior is in good shape. They're doing minute panelizing, some millwork. We still have to do what we call our punch list, so we'll find things that they'll have to correct, but they should be minor. They are having one or two issues with getting some things due to the virus. Security glazing, they're having trouble getting out of California, but they think they're going to have that ready, get that in the next week or two. And the only other thing that I'm aware of is a Sallyport overhead door, but they're also thinking they'll have that in a couple of weeks. So, other than that, they don't feel like they have any material interruptions. Our labor now, labor, they did experience some labor interruptions, but they feel like that's all behind them. At least, that's the information we're getting. So, Lord willing, we'll be moving in in July.
You know what the funny thing was? Over the weekend, I was bored, and I clicked on YouTube to watch some of our videos. Last year in May, at this particular time, Slade said we're going to be in this thing by September. You remember that? We had that full meeting, when you go through all those meetings, but the May meeting last year, we're talking about the same thing, that we were planning on moving in in August to September last year. So, here it is, one year later, in May. So, next year in May, this time, Carl. I'm going to bring it up again.
You're right. I can't deny that, and I would not swear it on the Bible. I just, we constantly updating.
Daniel, you notice I haven't said anything?
Haven't said a word this time, because you were vocal last time, that you felt like it was September.
What was our first move in March 19?
Yes, sir.
That was our target, March 19.
So, we were sitting here in May of last year, and Slade had the same sport coat on, that same little blue one right there. We said the same thing, you know?
Well, I know I've lost all credibility, and I, you know, I'll take a beating. Might as well. Y'all have to get in line, though. I've got a couple of other projects. We had a project in Mississippi State just literally stopped for six weeks, and then we have another project in Shreveport that only stopped for two weeks, but I don't have any excuses. Do y'all have any questions about any of that?
I have something that she wants to...
I do. I have two questions. One is the approval of not to exceed how much?
I'd say, let's say $18,000, just to be safe.
Okay, and that's for the...
Microphones, yeah, for the tables.
Okay. The other thing is, we had talked about the, at the chancery clerk's public window, the...
Yes, and, yeah, and I think I gave you a figure, again, probably what we've been doing, I think maybe $20,000. I don't think it'll cost that much, but again, not to exceed, that's to add a window.
Privacy across the chancery clerk's public counter during the, it was in the justice court. That was already within the building, was already designed in, but it was, I don't know who didn't ask for whatever, but the...
It wasn't requested in chancery court.
Right, in chancery, but now that everything's happened, and I think it would be best to do that as a change order, because we could get it to match everything you were doing now.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I did not, you're right, I forgot about that. I don't, again, I don't think it'll cost $20,000, but we don't know till we get there. We got, well, we've been doing this at schools and some other things in Madison County. They, you know, what happened in Madison County, they had us come up there and do a survey for all their buildings. Then they decided because of the cost of that, they were going to spend like a couple hundred thousand dollars on all the buildings to put up something temporary themselves. And that's an option, but in this building, it'd probably be better to go ahead and match what we've got in the justice court area, but that's the board's decision. But that's what it would be, about $20,000 or no more than that, shouldn't be more than that. We've got to figure out how to support it, we've got to figure out how not to interrupt the airflow, and how high to go up and get with Larry and them on that. All right.
We can do it under Laura. She's got something else to add to.
Anybody have questions, comments?
Did y'all ever get the elevation, like what everybody was talking about?
Oh, on the, that, Brad, I've not heard any more about it. Have not heard more from Judge Roberts on that. He was going to check with, I think, the Southern District fellow attorney to see if there was any Leroy, but I have not heard any more on that.
So, as of right now, it's staying?
Staying the same, which is, it's the same elevation as the circuit courtroom's...
The current?
Current circuit court, yes, sir. So, I have not, to be honest with you.
I had a conversation with Judge Roberts, probably after the last time that Carl and Judge Roberts spoke, and the indication to me was that they were satisfied with where things are at the moment, that they want to, they kind of just want to see how things are going to play out, and then if it is decided at some point that there needs to be a change, they'll come back and revisit that with us.
All right. That's good. Okay. We've got lights and a tunnel sign, so.
I'll see you next May, Carl.
You may, we might be still working on the chancery by that time. We don't want to uncover any dead bodies in the chancery. All right, don't be giving my ideas. Okay, next we have with us someone from Armstrong Relocation would like to introduce themselves. Morning.
Morning. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah.
Did anybody count how many times Carl said the word "moving"? My name is Keith Hopper. I'm with Armstrong Relocation. We are a, one of the largest moving companies in the greater Jackson area. We're in Madison, Mississippi. We've been here since 1985. We have, Laura gave us the opportunity of touring your chancery and justice contents that are going to need to be moved to the new building. And we are going to be submitting a bid for your review over the next couple of weeks. I do feel with Carl that you guys will be operational July 20, and that will be predicated on a successful move happening the week prior. Daniel, it's good to see you. I hope you recognize me.
Good to see you, but I do. How you doing?
Yes, sir, fine. So, I just wanted to take a few minutes to introduce, I don't know if any of you are familiar with Armstrong Relocation, the United Van Lines Moving Company that's in Madison. If you haven't moved, you might not know us, but we're one of the very few organizations here that can handle the complexity of your upcoming move of all your files. If you haven't looked at the files between the multiple locations, it's a lot of files that you guys are going to be moving.
Have you got a round park, round number estimate?
Yes, sir, we have another company also that is submitting a proposal.
Oh, never mind. I wouldn't want you to give away all your good...
Well, it's competitive. It is competitive, and there are a lot of resources that are going to have to be required to do it in your tight timeframe. So, if there's any questions, or I hope to maybe come back next, on the 15th, if it's appropriate, and I'll do a better process of getting on the agenda. Is that okay?
When are we planning on?
I think we're going to have something for you guys to consider on the 15th. That's kind of the timeline that we've made in place, which gives us, you know, a full month to address anything that the board has concerns about. It gives us about a month.
What, are you talking about July 15?
The move will be on the 17th of July through the 19th. The proposals will be in on the 15th of June.
I want to come out a month to move, I'll catch up.
We've got about 30 days there to get squared up on exactly what it is that we're going to do. So, this is professional service. You're not bounded by any specific rules as it relates to the receipt of the bids, but we are doing all that we can to make this a competitive process so that we get the best price and service for the taxpayers.
Good deal. Nice meeting you.
Really appreciate these guys coming and making the effort to show you a face with the name. This, we don't do this kind of, this magnitude of move very often, so this is kind of a big deal for all of us, so.
So, it's united, you know, you see those everywhere. Is Armstrong associated with them, or are they a...
It's almost like a franchise. So, we are the, we represent the greater Jackson area, central Mississippi. We do, we are approved through the Public Service Commission for doing local intrastate and long-distance moving. So, Armstrong is kind of a franchise or a brand that's owned here locally.
Got you. All right. When is the last time y'all had a move of this magnitude?
Well, they don't happen very often. Now, we do move doctors off, this is similar to a doctor's office, a healthcare, a dental office with the files and records, because you're not moving a lot of furniture. It's mostly your files and records. So, we're predicting, you know, 15 to 20 movers to make it happen over a three- or four-day period. But it's, we, I mean, we moved Utah Construction, Utah Construction, last month, which they had about 40 to 50 employees, but they didn't have their, the records. The demographics of that particular move are a little different. In 2013, our Birmingham office moved the U.S. Bankruptcy Court over in Birmingham. That was a really large move that I could provide you information on if you need, but they just, they're not real often.
I remember Justice moving to the new federal courthouse, and that was similar.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate some advice.
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you. Have a good morning.
Okay, that's all we have signed up for public comment. This time, we'll have a motion to approve the minutes.
So, move.
Motion by Jared, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Consent agenda?
Most approved.
Motion by Jared?
Second.
Second by Daniel. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Mr. Gilbert's not here, so...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve A, B, and C for Caroline.
Wow, aren't you generous.
I am today. It's going to be a new, it's a new start, Bishop. It's June 1st.
Motion by Daniel.
Carl's got me feeling motivated. Carl's optimistic, I'm optimistic today, you know?
All right. A, B, and C approved by Daniel.
Jared, second.
Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. Mr. John, you just waiting on somebody to do it for you, too?
Yes, sir.
I make the motion.
Here with the final. What you doing, real quick, if you want to do something?
Yeah, I made a petition to change assessment for 2019 real property of my system.
I make motion approved.
Motion by Jared, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And B and C have already been approved in February.
It's just we had to change the dates.
Oh, yeah.
So, I guess we need approval for that again.
All right.
Most approved.
Motion by Steve, or Jared, second by Steve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. All right. Come on up, Mike.
I make motion to approve A.
All right, most approved, work accomplished, and scheduled by Jared. Second by...
I'll second it. I just thought you said...
Daniel, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Feeling good today, Bishop, you know? I just... Me and you got messy shirts on, so I feel like I'm...
I checked the pants, too.
Well, I didn't get the memo. I didn't read it.
Got B, request approval for utility permit for AT&amp;T to construct a cable along and cross Cato in between Highway 18 and Wade Patrick Road.
Motion. Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Hey, how is our inspectors and these people working? Is that working out like we expected?
Yes, sir, it's working out real good. I mean, we've actually, I mean, we're still having a few problems out of a few utility companies, but some has accepted what we're trying to do and moving forward, and it's made it a lot easier. And, I mean, we got documentation, Steve, to back up where they, we know they've hit stuff in people's yards, and we know who, we've had several incidents, sewer lines getting hit that we didn't know it, but we knew what utility was there when they called us and said they had problems, you know? So, that's been a big help to us to identify the problem on the back end instead of everybody...
Denying it.
Denying it, pushing the finger off to somebody else and saying, no, we didn't do it, you know, such and such was in here. So, we kind of know where everybody's at, so it's really helped out a lot doing that.
Hey, Mike, on, this kind of goes back to that A section, talking about the road working all scheduled, on Bradford.
Yes, sir.
Around that 570 Bradford, or Bradford Drive. Well, they've cut that section out that we've gone through and repaved last year, that big chunk that's got cut out of there. Tell me about that section again.
My understanding, Flowood did have a sewer problem there. I've just kind of got some after done on it, Daniel. Nobody contacted me in the front end on this, and they backfilled it with dirt. We asked when they backfilled it with 16, so, I mean, we're going to have to probably go in and dig it out to fix it right, you know?
All right, so my question is, if Flowood comes in and digs up our road, do they just walk off and leave it? Is that ours, or they say they go back and fix it?
Yes, sir. They have a sewer easement, but it's our maintenance responsibility. So, the way that that would work is, it needs to be a communication process, Daniel. And if they, if they impact our roadway, they need to return it or restore it in the manner that we request. There's not going to be a law or rule that we can point to and say, and here's what happens if you don't.
Yeah, so, so I guess my thing is, I think I'm going to need you to help Mike get this fixed. If maybe you could articulate one of your good penmanship letters to explain to the Flowood that you've gutted this entire section that's now coming out into a brand-new road we just put down, and now I've got a hole in it, and the lady that hit it this weekend is extremely upset at me because I left this hole in the middle of the road. So, I need somebody to, I know Mike's tried to talk to Flowood and ask him to put it back the way they left it, the way they found it, and they didn't. So, I need some help on somebody that can motivate the public works department over there to fix this huge hole, the hole probably for me and Mr. Renee over here in the road that this lady's car's tore up over.
Got you.
Is this Bradford?
Bradford, the main drag, not the main drag, main drag obviously is Boulevard.
Bears anything up? No barriers or anything?
Off the roadway, you know, but they've cut into our curb, they've cut into the road, probably for me and Mike, and it's probably the width of that, but it's a good one, and it's just got rock in it. It drops down about that far, and it's, it's in the lane, so it's not marked, and then when a car hits it, we're going to tear it up. My fear is, a car hits it, buzzes tire out, and there's homes right there. It's just going to spiral off over into one of those spots. So, I need somebody to express to Flowood the importance of tearing the stuff up and fixing it the way they left it. That's what I need.
Is Flowood planning to do the overlay work on it?
They said they was, but, you know, that happens.
It's been there, it's been there 10 days. We're 10 days into it now.
Okay.
I'm scared they called him field, and they got him field to come out, and they're not going to come, so I'm worried on that.
Well, I mean, if they backfilled it the correct way, Craig, we wouldn't have this problem, and that's what we asked. Actually, going to my inspectors and run across them and ask them to backfill it correctly, and that's how we found out they was cutting the road. We just happened to run across them. They don't never let us know when they're going to cut our road.
So, we'll argue, and, you know, that Mike and I'll need to work together on exactly what it is I'm supposed to tell them.
Yeah, because this was a brand-new road.
Right, that's right.
I got, Mr. President, if you'll allow me to add one thing, it'd actually be on Bridget, me and her talked about it. She's out today, but is asking for advertisement for contact, I mean, for laminized box cupboards. We're going to put it out for bid and try to get that on our bid sheet.
All right.
Commodity?
Yes.
If you're willing to commodity, as y'all understand, move it to us, I think probably a six-month or a year, hopefully a year.
Yeah, I think we're going to try to balance it out, Craig, to where it falls off with the rest of everything else, and then we'll pick it up from here forward.
So, when do we do the next one? August?
It'd be in August or something like that, Jake.
Short-term, and then in term...
So, we just need a commodity bid for...
Off the roadway, you know, but they've cut into our curb, they've cut into the road, probably for me and Mike, and it's probably the width of that. But it's a good one, and it's just got rock in it. It drops down about that far, and it's, it's in the lane.
Okay.
So, it's not marked, and then when a car hits it, we're gonna tear it up. My fear is, a car hits it, buzzes tire out, and there's homes right there. It's just gonna spiral off over into one of those spots. So, I need somebody to express to Flowood the importance of tearing the stuff up and fixing it the way they left it.
Gotcha.
That's what I need.
Is, uh, is Flowood planning to do the overlay work on it?
They said they was, but, you know.
Gotcha.
It's been there, it's been, it's been there ten days. We're ten days into it now.
Okay.
So. I'm scared they called him field, and they got him field to come out, and they're not gonna come, so I'm worried on that.
Well, I mean, if they backfilled it the correct way, Craig, we wouldn't have this problem. And that's what we asked. Actually, going to my inspectors and run across them and ask them to backfill it correctly. And that's how we found out they was cutting the road. We just happened to run across them. They don't never let us know when they're gonna cut our road.
So, we'll argue, and, you know, that Mike and I'll need to work together on exactly what it is I'm supposed to tell them.
Yeah, because this, this was a brand-new road.
Right, that's right.
I got, uh, Mr. President, if you'll allow me to add one thing, it'd actually be on Bridget, me and her talked about it. She's out today, just asking for advertisement for, uh, contact, I mean, for, uh, luminized box covers. We're gonna put it out for bid and try to get that on our bid sheet.
All right.
Commodity?
Yes.
If you're willing to come on.
Right.
So, y'all understand, move it to us, I think probably in six months or a year, hopefully a year.
Yeah, I think we're gonna try to balance it out, Craig, to where it falls off with the rest of everything else, and then we'll pick it up from here forward.
Y'all get that?
So, when do we do the next one? August?
It'll be in August or something like that, Jake.
Short term, and then in term.
So, we just need a commodity bid for a couple of months.
Covers to our normal commodity bid sheet. And by the way, we're probably gonna add several more items to our commodity bid program, as it were. What we're trying to do is to get us in a position where the road department is more streamlined on, on commodities and materials that we use regularly. You know, more streamlined approach, so we're not constantly having to do quotes and bids and all that nonsense.
And the reason it took so long, we, you know, the box covers are all different sizes, so we've actually come to an agreement that we're gonna bid this out by the pound. I'll have to get Craig to help me and Bridget. We talked about it Friday to kind of give us a good description of what we're looking at, but we're gonna bid it out by the pound.
So, right now, we're just doing illuminated covers, not?
Right.
The other.
But these illuminated box covers have a tendency to run over our fifty, you know, our two quote mark.
Yeah.
You know, depending on what size it is.
So, I have most to approve adding this item. Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Now, most approved. Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker?
Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. President. The item we have on the agenda today is Belchase subdivision. We're recommending approval of the preliminary plat, and that's in District Two.
Yeah, make a motion to approve.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Slay?
Parker's built for speed over there today.
So, we've got two public hearings items, A and B, both of which are to set public hearings for June fifteen at nine a.m. I would ask that we take A and B together if appropriate.
So moved.
Motion by Jared to approve A and B.
Second.
Second by Daniel. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item C is a continuation of a discussion that we began a couple of meetings back. Uh, this is the official action after you guys have had an opportunity to, to see the budget, uh, or to hear about the budget presentation. This is for consultation services, travel expenses, and related expenses that would be incurred by our lobbying team in federal, in the federal area, Wagner and Brunini, and this would relate to two specific funding streams that are available to Rankin County, one of which has not been available to Rankin County in our lifetime, I don't think. Uh, one is the CD, our urban develop, uh, Housing and Urban Development, CDBG program, which, as a result of this pandemic, has been expanded to allow access to entities that would not otherwise qualify under HUD's programming. And we want to make a run at qualifying one or more projects for Rankin County that have been off limits for us. We want to make a run at that. Uh, and because we have not had access to that program in, in my memory ever, we need some help. Uh, so the idea is that we get to D.C. and ask for some help on how to do it, uh, before we try to do it. Uh, the, the idea here being a little bit of an investment for intel purposes that would then allow us to be much more strategic in, in what it is that we want to pursue and how we want to pursue it. I, I want to be clear about that, that this, uh, that there has been no determination whatsoever about specific programming or projects. This is idea-seeking and information gathering, and then we will focus down with you guys on the specific projects for which we might be able to qualify, uh, and make sure that you guys are on board with what that would look like. That's on the CDBG side. Uh, of course, as you know, on the other side, we have been working diligently to try to position ourselves for a qualification under the Army Corps of Engineers, seven thousand and one program. We've talked about that, uh, at least, uh, at the basic level. Uh, and so what we want to do with the seven thousand and one program is to utilize our federal delegation to help us communicate, can I say it that way? Communicate with, uh, with the local Corps of Engineers, uh, about the seven, specifically about the seven thousand and one program. And, and here's the trick on that. Uh, the Vicksburg operations do not have any seven, active seven thousand and one programs in their repertoire, none. Uh, and they are anxious to demonstrate that, that there is eligibility for seven thousand and one programming in the, in the Vicksburg region, okay? Mobile has, uh, one or more seven thousand and one programs. The Memphis operation has one or more seven thousand and one programs, and Vicksburg's feeling left out. Uh, and they have identified Rankin County and our work on the stormwater management program as the type of effort, uh, that makes a lot of sense for Vicksburg to be involved in. And so we, we're wanting to get, uh, a strategic approach to Vicksburg to get that going, okay? And so that, there's your two, uh, somewhat divergent purposes for this trip. Uh, what's included in your budget here, uh, is at least one trip to D.C. Uh, with a supervisor specifically there, uh, as, uh, as the, the name, the face, and the person of the board in a representative capacity, making sure that our delegation and others that we're able to meet with in D.C. understand that these are priority items. These are important items for Rankin County.
So, when do they intend to go?
Sir?
When do they intend to go?
As, as soon as the board is approving of the budget, the scheduling for that trip will begin. And the idea is, within the next thirty to forty-five days, that trip will occur.
Okay. So, I guess as, as we approve this, we need to decide who's gonna go.
Uh, I don't know that.
Daniel going?
I don't, I don't know that it has to be approved today, guys.
No.
Uh.
I'll go.
Yeah. If I can just say this, uh, I don't know that who is the designate has to actually be determined by the board by way of official action.
Oh, all right.
I don't have a problem with that. It's just that one of you, one of you guys needs to say, I, I'm gonna go so that we know who to get the ticket for to go, okay? So, uh, I, but I don't, I don't know that it requires official action on the part of the board to designate anyone.
The only thing I want to add to that, though, is Slay needs to be there, and we need to pick up Slay's ticket to be in that part of it.
So, this, again, this budget does not include any cost reimbursement for me at all. I, I did not.
Slay said he would pay his own ticket to go up there, which I appreciate that. And if Bob was here, Bob would probably say, please do that. But Bob's not here no more. But for the same side of that, I appreciate Slay offering to pay his own way to get up there to it. But I think it's important that Slay's in part of this process to be able to sort everybody through the priority of Rankin County. I know the Wagners are saying they're for it, and I know the Bruninis are saying they're for it. But for the same point, I think it's critical to decipher the information back from the board, Slay to be there, so.
So, we need to add in one supervisor and one county attorney.
Yep.
Right.
All right.
And they gonna ruin together, right?
That's it.
Daniel, you're up for that.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
Man, y'all are putting a lot on that man right there now. Lord have mercy.
It can be both ways now.
That's true.
All right, so, uh, have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, nay, or any no's? All right, I screwed that up, so, yeah. Do you have anything else, Craig?
No, sir, I, I just want to point out, guys, that what, what you've done here, uh, sets a not-to-exceed cap on both time and money. And so there's a ninety-day window to get this effort completed, okay? Uh, that's not to suggest that the work will have to stop at that point. There will be additional work that has to go forward, but the board is in total control over what going forward looks like. And if at the end of the ninety-day period, the board is not satisfied that you're getting any traction, you just stop it, uh, right at that point. So, the whole idea behind this was to, to put some parameters on it so that it didn't become a continuing creeping issue for the board to have to deal with, okay? So, we're gonna revisit all of this at the end of the ninety-day period. By my reckoning, that means at the end of August, you guys need to evaluate where you are. So, we're gonna be pretty busy in August, especially at the end of August. This year especially, we're gonna be very busy with issues of budget, with issues of discussion of where we're headed with all of that. And sometimes these kinds of things can get lost, so I'm trying to help us to be reminded that we need to revisit this issue at the end of August and not let it slip through the cracks on us, okay? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Ms. Oster?
Thank you. The first item I have is authority to pay the, excuse me, the county's portion of PERS on the net income of the chancery clerk for two thousand and nineteen. Y'all prior approved an amount, but there was a, an incorrect amount given to us, and we need an additional one thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars to complete the nineteen, uh, amount that will be going to PERS.
So moved. Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
The next item is approval of the letter of engagement for our FY nineteen audit with the Office of the State Auditor and authority for the president to sign.
So moved.
Motion by Jared?
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Right.
Ayes have it.
Then I have three additions. Uh, the first one would be payout number thirty-five to Allbritton Construction in the amount of five hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. And then, uh, another one would be approval not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars for the microphones for the chancery, and also a change order of not to exceed twenty thousand for the privacy glass in the chancery.
Have a motion to add these. Motion by Daniel. Second by Jared. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
All right, do you want to take them individually to approve them?
Just grab them together.
Okay. All right.
Let's just add it.
Have a motion to approve the five hundred thousand, whatever.
Five fifty-one, nine fifty-three.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Jared. Any discussion?
Hey, I, I just want to ask one thing on the, on the courthouse deal. I know we talked about all the dates and extensions that they threw out. Where does this fall? I, I guess I should have asked Carl. He left, I guess. Then, we, I know we granted a bunch of days throughout the timeframe. Are they in a penalty phase at all? Are they still inside their window of days?
My understanding is that they're, they're in liquidated damages now.
So, they're paying penalties for every day we're not in there, to a certain extent?
It's, they're, it's being counted against them.
Okay, so when the final summation comes back, that's where that'll be credited back.
We'll be able to evaluate, once we know the substantial completion date, that's gonna be your triggering event. We anticipate substantial completion will be at the end of this month, right? So, that's substantial completion. That's your triggering date to start evaluating where are we, because that's.
On days.
Yes, sir. That, that's kind of like the, the clock stop. That's where the, it clicks to stop it when you hit substantial completion. The architect has to say they have made that point.
Okay.
And we're not there yet.
So, we're still counting days.
It's still, and, and here's where, I don't know exactly when it started, and I don't know how many days have gone on since.
Yeah.
I don't know how many official rain days have happened since they started the L.D.s, which would have stopped it and restarted, stopped it and restarted. I, I just, I don't know, I don't know where that is.
How soon the COVID nineteen days have stopped?
Well, possibly.
They're gonna get, there's gonna be some of those, right?
Keep in mind that each contract rises and falls on its own, and not all contracts have force majeure clauses in them, okay?
Okay.
So, an example of that would be, uh, some of our road projects that are M.D.O.T. contracts. This is the flip side of the coin, where we hate those things until we like them. So, M.D.O.T. contracts that control, uh, the, uh, the projects that, where they make us be in charge of them. Let's just say Spillway North Shore, because we're all familiar with that, right? That's an example of a D.O.T.-controlled project that is a D.O.T.-authorized contract. There's no force majeure in D.O.T.'s contract. So, when they throw COVID up, hey, sh- show me, show me in the contract where we're obligated to recognize that. And they say, well, there's, you know, a federal declaration of emergency. What do you want us to do? Well, that, that's something that you guys can evaluate, determine, but there's not gonna be a contractual obligation to recognize that.
Okay. Sorry about that.
I don't think there's gonna be force majeure. There's probably some force majeure language in our construction contract on courthouse, probably. I just hadn't looked specifically at it.
I guess the main thing.
Yeah, we don't argue at hand.
Yeah, the main thing, yeah, the main thing I was thinking about, we're adding the change orders, so we're adding things to it. Does that automatically grant them days?
No, sir, not under that contract. The, the, the board will receive a recommendation to add days.
Okay.
The board can consider that.
Okay.
The boards.
I know on some deals, when you add things to contracts, it extends life.
And that's a D.O.T.
Gotcha.
Construction, uh, road construction project.
Gotcha.
With that auto stuff in it. We don't have that on the construction contracts.
Okay, thank you.
There were three, three weather days requesting this, which I did not put.
I just assumed, I just assumed there was.
I didn't even.
I didn't bother those.
Coming in, denied.
Well, on, on these items, as Carl was telling us, they can get to these by this date or that date, which is still within when they're gonna finish anyhow, and it's not an extension. They, they don't have to stop doing everything else to put up plexiglass.
Right. That's correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
That's all under my section.
The next one, I forgot, the, the micro, oh, do we do all three of them?
We did.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Good deal.
Caroline, you've already covered you.
Additional business?
Well, Caroline, do you, we covered what you had on this. Do you have something else?
Hey, I'm here for a place manager.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. So, um, I'm kind of in the dark on where we, how are we gonna discuss the complaints, so. My district's running fine, just so you know.
Well, my district's not running fine.
All right. You have the floor.
Ever since I've been elected, since January, we got, we've had several complaints in District Three on roads completely getting dropped off on the pickup on Wednesdays and Saturdays, and that's usually our days of running. And I mean, this is like occurring every week, constant. And, uh, I just wanted to see what Waste Management's got to say, Mr. David and Katie. Y'all more welcome to come up and speak.
How about you?
I've got some.
More.
Probably once a week if you get something.
First of all, I want to thank the board for allowing us to come in here and speak. And everyone knows Katie. Katie is our senior district manager over Jackson Halling, which is over your contract. And I'll let Katie have the floor, and then I'll come back with some things also.
So to address your concerns specifically with Wednesday, Saturday, it has been a concern, more so since the COVID-19 issue has plagued us all. And part of that issue and is the additional trucks that we're trying to run to accommodate social distancing, not having two men on the truck, making sure that we have every area serviced. I've worked with Christie a lot to address these issues and complaints and hoping, and then we've discussed it, and I haven't gotten confirmation yet, that we can put something in the upcoming water bill that goes out in July to remind customers that service, that garbage needs to be out by 7:00 a.m. That has been a constant issue that's plagued us with residents being accustomed to a certain time of day. And we get there, and we're there before their service time, and they're missed. Certainly, it's not because we're not running the streets. It's just they're just not used to that time. You know, that has been something we've always tried to let residents know, regardless of the time that you get serviced, please have your garbage out by 7:00 a.m. in the event of situations like this. So I'm hoping that will help solve part of the problem. A couple of the issues that we've run into during rain events, we have roads that are not in any condition for us to go down. Not an excuse, just we don't want trucks stuck. We don't want trucks, and you talked about destroying roads. We certainly don't want to be the culprit behind that. So that has been an issue. And what we're trying to do is really just work through the issues that we have with certain areas. Certainly, no excuse for not providing service. You know, it's just sometimes these things, when you start, when you have an event like this and you change to a one-man route where you had two men on the truck, or you change time of service, we have to notify residents. We have to do that proactively in order to make sure everyone understands and we're communicating our service level to everyone proactively, not reactively. And in this situation, it was reactive. So, you know, I do hope to see a huge improvement there with what we have going on currently.
But the roads you saying that were missed, let's say last week, were they just earlier than normal, or were the whole road skipped?
It could have been, I mean, I would have to know specific addresses, you know, to look at and see what the, and that's what, inside, about what, two months ago, I guess, I gave Christie and Tiffany my phone number. I said, I want you to put my cell phone number in your, on your desk, and make sure when residents call, you're giving the calls to me. Because the only way I can fix the problem is if they're calling me directly, and I can really communicate with them. Okay, did you have your garbage out by 7:00? Is it a road issue? Is it the type of commodity that you're putting out that we don't service, that sort of thing? So I've been doing a lot of work there. I get a lot of phone calls, which is good, because I'm some, you know, in a lot of cases, I'm able to educate customers on what the situation is, what's going on. And they've been very forthcoming with information. And some are just our total miss, you know, and we just, it's a driver coaching opportunity for me. So we're working through that as well. So that's been very helpful to me to talk directly to the customers.
Let's say on a Wednesday pickup in District Three, are these trucks equipped with some kind of GPS mapping system to know exactly what roads they hit?
Yes, they are. Yep. And we do track a lot that way. And sometimes what we'll do is we'll send a snippet back of the area, hey, we were on this street at 12:30 this afternoon. And we're able to let the, because some of, a lot of the calls I've been getting lately are customers saying, well, everyone on my street was serviced but me. Well, in that instance, you know, and I will never tell a customer they're wrong, you know, so, I mean, I'm not going to say, well, your garbage wasn't out by 7:00 a.m. But that usually becomes the issue that we're challenged with, so. But again, it's education, it's learning. The customers are appreciative that we're solving the problem, that we're talking to them about the problem, and that we're rectifying the situation.
So Katie, do y'all archive that route information, the GIS?
We do. Yes.
So heck, y'all better just give it to Brad and show where they have and haven't been.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, if there's certain areas that you want to see on those days, where we, the areas that we were in or not in, I can completely provide that for you.
Well, I mean, I know this really started, I was getting phone calls way before the COVID hit. And I mean, I know we got a lot of rural roads out in the county. And I mean, I see your point on when maybe one house, their garbage didn't get picked up, and everybody else's did. They just didn't get it out there in time. But we get a lot of folks that the whole road is missed. It might be a dead end road, and I don't know if they just missed that road because they can't get turned around. I know I got a lot of bad roads in District Three.
Yeah. But I mean, that's the things we need to be able to share with you guys and say, hey, it is a road condition issue. I mean, again, no excuse, the garbage still needs to be serviced, but we just need to communicate that a little better, obviously, to you, so that your concerns are addressed, and you have answers to give to your constituents as well.
Thank you. Here's one thing I'd just like to add to it. I know when I, I get them randomly. I mean, no really specific pattern to it. And I try to get them to Janice, and I think y'all do a really good job of this, but when I get them, come in, if y'all can be sure you just follow up with the homeowner for me, in some kind of contact message, that'd be really good for me. I know Janice tries to call them back and stay in the loop, and I think they've been calling them back a little bit, Janice. But when we get those, I forward over to her, and y'all get them, if you can, just be sure you talk to the homeowner that's there at some point or fashion.
Yeah. And as long as there's a phone number provided, and sometimes I'll ask Janice or Christie for a phone number, so that I can specifically call, because some things are a little concerning to me that I get in these emails, and I want more detail around it so that I can coach the drivers and the helpers on it as well.
Thank you.
So we can give your phone number out to our constituents?
Yes, sir. They have, yeah. My number's out there, and they do call me, so absolutely, yes.
I'd like one thing. Y'all, y'all have been real good. I've had different issues, and I usually kind of handle it directly myself as far as contacting you all. And y'all have been real good about taking care of them, I will say that. But there's one that has been ongoing, and it seems like it's been here lately, and I sent, I sent a video of one. Somebody's riding down the road following the truck, so it's kind of hard to deny it, is the garbage cans. And I think we even had a letter sent, somebody followed him and described his own situation. Just like myself, I live on very rural, but anyway, what they do, they're doing, they're taking a garbage can, they're sitting on the side of the road. And they may have them sitting right beside their mailbox, or right behind their mailbox, right through the road. And the video the other day, there's two of them. Dude dumped it, set it in the road in front of the mailbox. Got the other one, dumped it, set it in the road in front of the mailbox. Well, the American area won't deliver it.
Right.
And plus, it just needs to be out of the road. So some of these roads are, well, a lot of narrow, very narrow roads. So if you've got a garbage can there, you're going to have to go into the other lane, or you hit the garbage can. That's something that really is a no-brainer, in my opinion, for the guy on the truck. But, you know, somebody, I think Janice got a letter, she forwarded, he was in detail, he said, I followed them from here to here, and how many tendingly they were doing that, they did mine, and it, you know, it was going on down. So that's something I know is easy to address and easy. We had this several years ago, and y'all addressed it, and we got it kind of on track. But anyway, that's probably my biggest here lately. You know, you've missed a couple of roads, but I think you had a new route driver. Y'all got it done that late that evening. So, you know, you've done a good job of correcting your problems. I'm commending you on that, but the can deal, and don't throw their cans.
Right. I agree, yep.
Yeah, I get, I have actually fixed a couple of cans, just so I wouldn't even have to hear it. Just, I'll pick it up and fix it.
Yeah, and your point to the cans in the road, Monterey Road, is I actually have a driver trainer out there today, following behind the truck to see what the practice is and what's going on, and to coach it. The driver on that road is, she's a fairly new driver. She's been with about, I guess she's been with us about four months, and she needs to be coaching that. And does she know that, or is that part of the training that we didn't really go into in depth? So that is being addressed.
Yeah, because Monterey is a clear example. There's no room there. One, just one time, one messed up, he was dumping, and then he dumped, anyway, the trash fell in the road. Of all days, I'm following the garbage truck. So I beat my horn out of him. He looked at him and went, like, what? And so he pulled up next house. I just put it apart, went up, told the driver, I said, man, it's just your bad day. I just told him who I was. I said, he said, he got on to him, he said, get your, back there, get that paper up, you know? But I thought, just your bad day, man, for me to be following you. But yeah, but no, anyway, I'm glad you're out there, Monterey. That's where most of this is happening. So, thank you.
And Daniel, you've had it in Avalon, this gentleman, Mr. Bird, has complained about the mess that they make behind the trucks. And he's out there picking up the garbage, because he's called numerous times and notified Daniel too, and I notified y'all.
Where is that Avalon, you say?
Off of Forsenview, off of Fanning Road out in Daniel's district. But I've sent you several on that, but that's just like Jared's complaint.
Right.
What is the limit? What is the number of bags or limbs? What will Waste Management pick up, and what will they not?
So we pretty much pick up everything. The limbs have to be cut to four-foot lengths. And we ask that, you know, and I don't know if, does it say bundled?
It says bundled, but everybody thinks of a bundle, they think it's bundled, but it's not. It's got to be bundled, where not to say 60 pounds, where they can reach and grab it.
One 60 pound.
Yeah, but you know, you're not talking about what, you know, there'll be piles of stuff out there that you can't put in there. I mean, limbs are one thing, they're talking about limbs.
Well, and so that's what we, you know, that's why I don't like that term bundled, because it almost does sound like it has to be tied up in a bow, right? And it doesn't. It needs to be stacked. Stacked for easy collection is what I like to tell people, you know, as long as it's cut to the proper length, it's stacked properly. The tree, like the limb, the actual logs cannot be over eight inches in diameter, so we have to make sure that those, too large, they get stuck in the blank. Yeah, so they're huge. Yeah. So that's a big deal, but we don't have typically a lot of problems with that. It's usually the limbs.
Four foot, four foot eight inch log, more than 60 pounds.
I'm sorry?
A four foot length of an eight inch log.
Oh, not, not logs. I'm talking about the diameter of the logs, not cut to, the limbs have to be cut to four-foot lengths, not the logs. The logs, I would hope, are chopped, you know, a lot smaller than that. I don't think that's ever an issue that we've had. Yeah, no, we're talking about the limbs, but...
How many rooftops do y'all pick up?
That's a good question there. It's just kind of ironic that back in February, I gave Ms. Laura, sent her a letter to get with you guys on. We had started doing some rerouting of the county. Your county has grown tremendously. I've talked to a couple of you, Daniel and I. We did a total reroute on his side, and it's just grown tremendously. And we've added four trucks to this county since we started the last contract. Now, you got to look at this. A truck is averaging, we're trying to, like, 800 to 900 homes a day. So when you're adding four trucks, you're doing, you're picking up a lot more. And so we started, when they did this reroute, our team came in and they started looking at the numbers. And this was also, I think, given to Ms. Laura, it was just a calculation that I came up with, that we can tell basically what's going on. Because a house normally averages about 32 to 35 pounds per home. Well, your house is, what we're picking up right now, it shows on the number we're using the bill, it shows in 19 that we're averaging 43.77 pounds per home. So we know that's out of sight. That is a lot, that's a lot of garbage. For every collection day, 43.77 pounds?
How long has that been on for? What time period?
Since...
That's every collection day.
Every collection days, yes. So, I mean, we got it calculated out by the months of disposal, unresidential. And that's what I was asking y'all. I mean, we've asked, when we ask, when she has to ask for trucks to put on contracts, the first thing they look at is, what are you billing? Your billing number hasn't changed. Why, why do you need more trucks now? What's the problem? You know, you got to answer these questions. Well, just our estimation, I think we're just billing a little bit over 27,000 right now. That it comes out that we're estimating on a 40-pound average. I gave you the benefit of the doubt. I just said, let me go to 40 pounds, that we're picking up 32,000 homes. You know, that's on 40 pounds. So if you drop it back to, you know, 30 pounds, you're going to add another thousand homes on there. I mean, one number that I came up with was 38,000. I don't think y'all have 38,000 homes. I mean, it's somewhere in between. And that's something we have to look at. Katie was explaining to y'all, when this hit, COVID hit, right, I mean, it's like I gave the letter, and it made COVID, very next day, COVID's hitting. And I understand y'all were busy, and y'all had a lot of things. I think we were on the agenda one time to come speak, and I said, look, they got a lot going on. Pull us off. Y'all got a lot more to worry about than this at the time. So...
Oh, so those numbers were prior to COVID?
Yes.
Okay.
Prior to COVID. And after COVID, they really went off the charts. So we already had added trucks. And then I want to explain this for Katie, something that she may have left out a little bit here. But she's had to bring in extra drivers. We've had to bring in, we get drivers from other sites to come in here, because we're strong residentially in this area. So bring them in, and the guys are trying, you come in and you're trying to run a route, and we're trying to keep them here. We're trying to keep them as close to areas that are very, very compact. When you run a county, Daniel's area can be very, very compact. Some, a lot of your areas can be, but when you get out in these county routes on the roads, and then trying to keep up with hours of violations, because we're going by DOT standards now, which we used to not, because, you know, the air law, they used to have this thing called the air law, that they'd let us work a driver 60 hours or 70 hours a week. Well, not, that's not anymore. She's under real strict guidelines on DOT hours. And now, with all the trucks, we've had to add more trucks, because it's just two people on the truck. I mean, you know, the driver and the helper. So I imagine on a lot of days in Rankin County, you got 10 trucks running out here today, where it used to be, you know, six, seven trucks. Some days, if we can, we have the power, we're going to put another 11 out here. It's, I mean, it's very tough since this...
You had a truck down my way, though, that like, looks like you brought it out of retirement.
Actually, it was actually in, we have brought them out of retirement. That's how many trucks we have over here.
Yeah.
We've run out of room to put trucks, residential trucks on our yard. We did bring it out of town. It was actually, it was actually...
I'm just saying, it was, it's like...
It was in the scrap list to be sold, and we had to have it. She had to have it, because, I mean, we're hearing y'all loud and clear. And we never leave the site wanting to miss anything. She has made some aggressive changes, because she wasn't happy with the way things are going. And we, she is working very hard, and I'm working with her. We're going to get this under control. But also, when y'all do get some time, I would like to sit down, so we can have some justification to get extra trucks in here. You know, I mean, they're not going to let us buy trucks if we don't have, I mean, we can't keep bringing trucks out of retirement, because they're old, they're worn out. They'll last a day, and then they'll work on them for two days, you know, so. But that is, you know, an issue that is actually happening right now. We love Rankin County. We love working with y'all, and every time we see the message that something's been missed, it's, it hurts. It does. Because we work hard to try not to miss it.
If y'all work really hard and do everything you can, and you get 99% of the garbage picked up, we should still have about 300 complaints.
Yeah, you're going to have, it's going to be...
I started thinking about that. That's kind of...
You know, if you're really calculating...
I try to be 99%, but I just don't hit it very often.
If you think about it, you're going to have, no matter what you do, 7% of people are not going to be happy. That's just proven stats. 7% so...
And our business is 12. You cannot have an opponent and only win by 88%.
You know, you know, the first problem I see in y'all's fence, I don't know why people, and some y'all may do it, but anyway, put the garbage out there in the garbage bag, just lay it out there by the road, and they put it out the night before.
And then the next day, it's all...
The dogs are torn out.
Next day, you drive by, and there's a dog's tail sticking out of the bag.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But I'm just saying, then you drive up and it's a mess. I mean, I don't know how you deal with that part. I don't like picking my own up, much less somebody else's.
I'd like to list of the roads, you know, you're saying that when it's raining, that you can't get down and get turned around, so we can get those in the drive.
Yeah.
That may have been more during, when it had this monsoon rain.
During the monsoons.
Yeah, some of them flooded probably.
We've got some that if we get two or three inches, like the stomp ridge, you can't go through it, especially in one of your trucks.
I got some where y'all backed down, because it's hard to turn around.
Yeah.
With the driver wrecked out, I think...
I think we ought to do a turnaround, backs down. There's not that many houses, he'll just back down the road, it's more than less a, obviously, dead end.
Right.
He'll back down, pick it up. Good idea.
So, I mean, yeah, also, I mean, we would like to have all full-time helpers on the back of our truck, but it just doesn't work that way, so we have to go through a temp agency, and it's been hard to get people to come to work.
I understand that.
Man, I got a lot of respect.
Katie, Katie works...
We've worked with company helpers, though. That's been a huge success. That was something that I started when I got here, now 10 months ago, and it was, we hired, I guess in my first 90 days here, we hired an additional 35 helpers, company helpers. So... So that has shown us huge dividends in service quality, in just professionalism on the truck, in, you know, getting routes collected, because what we're trying to do is make sure the helper learns the route as well as the driver, so if the driver's not there, especially in your area, the driver's not there, the helper can show the route, so the driver's not running blind with a map, because you know some of the roads in your area. I was actually on that route Saturday, and the roads are just, even on a map, you're like, where do I go? You know, so it is tough. So that is the huge advantage to the company helpers as opposed to going through the temp service.
Great.
Just a quick clarifier. All the rural routes that you guys are in, three, four, two to a lesser degree, and definitely one, y'all are actually on some private roads picking up garbage, right? So, and that's by virtue of an arrangement that you guys make, or that you have, or maybe it's just an understanding that you're, that, you know, those are not public roads, they're not publicly maintained, but you guys have an arrangement where you can access those roads, right?
Right. We get them to sign a waiver that, you know, there's a lot of roads that, when I took over seven years ago, that we weren't going down. They started wanting us to come down, we had to sign a waiver to relieve, relieve us.
So the only reason I bring that up was just as a reminder to all of us, that some of the roads that are in the rural areas especially, that may not be accessible for weather issues, they may not be roads that we can...
Right.
Yeah, the county's not going to be able to do anything to address that situation. And so it would be important for these guys especially, be able to delineate, well, what are the trouble roads in the rural areas that are private that we can't address? So I don't want them out making statements to constituents that suggest that the county's going to do something about accessibility during the inclement weather, when we can't. Right? So that's an important distinction that we all need to keep in mind, and I know you guys, you're on top... And I know you guys have, you're on top of that already. But really, from y'all's side of the equation, if it's a private road and there's an inclement weather problem, the county's simply not gonna be able to address that.
Right.
So, so if I provided you the list of the, the roads, you would know if they're private or not? Because I, I won't know that.
Yes, exactly.
We can handle that. And that's what I need to know is, because I mean, like I say, if it's a private driver, I mean, we just, we can't do nothing to it.
There is a little bit of a failsafe, a little bit of one. I'm not saying it's perfect. But if you can help your drivers understand that if it's a white sign...
If the signs are there.
That's private. If it's white, it's private. If it's green, it's public.
The more rural you get, the less signs you'll see because...
That's correct.
Taken down.
Usually after somebody's name.
Yeah, you may have a poll there.
And don't be misled, if you get out, if you get inside a municipality, the color system doesn't work anymore. Because municipalities control what their street signs look like. If you're in unincorporated county and it's white, it's private. If it's green and you're in unincorporated county, it's public.
Probably. I've, I've had some people buy green signs. They're not the same looking, I mean, they're close and put out at the end of their, yeah, yeah, I got...
So, they're trying to make you think it's public?
I don't know who they're trying to, I don't know, but I've seen it. Yeah.
Yeah. Alright.
Any more issues?
Your question didn't get answered about the bags. So, I wanted to address that, okay? So, so we are supposed to, um, to pick up everything that's at the curb, right? But what I typically tell people is, you know, we have a lot of customers we're out there servicing. So, if they have an unrealistic amount, meaning we always use the size, the, the back of a pickup truck. You know, if you have a large pileout, on first collection day, we're gonna get what would fit into the back of a pickup truck and we'll haul a call it, which is our system of tracking it, right? To say, hey, we serviced X amount at this home, we left this, can you put in a ticket for next collection day? In the event, it's not the same driver. So, they know, they have to pick up the rest of the stuff that's at the curb. So, we, um, you know, Rankin County has been wonderful working with us, um, and, and through this whole COVID thing, where we were not able to service a lot of the bulk items because we were really focused on the garbage piece. But, but that is typically the guide that we use, just to be reasonable about the service.
Fits in a gar, in a back of a truck.
We would get that on first collection day.
They didn't say piled up three half.
Which is probably fifteen, twenty, fifteen bags or so?
Yeah, it's about three cubic yards.
Wow, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's a lot. And, and that's, that's usually not a problem that we have in this area. It's not a huge problem, I would say. It's the exception to the...
But you don't pick up mattresses and all that, and I tell people that. You don't pick up their mattress over, because they pile them out there.
Yeah, we, we, we'll pick up mattresses, yeah. Yeah, yeah. We typically do, um, yeah, we, we'll do one bulk item per collection, so, um, that's...
Christie's real good and she'll call us and give us the address.
Wow, if I call and give you one on the side of the road, can you get that one too?
Yeah, and you know, honestly, I, I like the phone call to schedule the pickups that way because then they're, they're sure proof. They have a ticket for it, they know they have to get it, they have accountability, they have to hit it on their computer saying, I have serviced this bulk item. That, that helps a lot when we can, when we have residents schedule that.
A home repossession and they have like thirty bags out the street. We can just call and schedule this?
Well, not, that, that's not part of the contract. You know, you can't just move everything to, to the curb.
No, I mean in bags.
In bags?
Yeah.
Well, you bring it there, we'll work on it. Don't go and get all thirty of them a day.
Okay.
We got one right now, called Friday, that, you know, the garbage, it didn't get picked up. And then he's got more, so he keeps getting more and y'all just keep pick, and he, I'll have to get with you on this one because he's got a pretty good stack. And he was complaining that it just keeps building because you can't pick up more than you're normal than when you come by.
And it's a house clean out?
No, you shouldn't.
It's just a normal...
He keeps adding to it.
Where is he?
Yeah, where, where, yeah, let's say that, because that needs to be, y'all, he, he'll be got.
He called Friday. And complaining about that, just like Jay said. We've got a large number of bags out there and it keeps filling the building. Because you only get a couple when you come by.
Y'all don't, y'all don't pick up like, I mean, they put furniture, recliners, everything else out there.
We do, yeah, we pick that up.
Fits in a...
Like, like they rent, they go in and gut a house. They bring all that stuff out there and it just be, I've seen it, I told them, they kind of haul it off.
Well, yeah, I mean, if they're doing that, if it's construction, they go to the house.
No, I don't mean that kind of construction. I'm talking about like...
Construction or eviction type of...
Runner moved out, runner moved out and had all kind of junk and they pulled all that stuff out. I said, they're not gonna pick that up.
The owner and renter.
Yeah.
And I actually sent one lady to y'all about a bagster because she had carpet pads and stuff that was out there that was being picked up in Daniel's district. I told her she had to call and get a bagster for them.
Yeah, because it's construction material, yeah.
And she said she was gonna call y'all.
I tried to wean some of that away from you because I, I agree. I drive by to see that and they'll call me and they won't pick it up. And I said, they're not gonna pick that up. You're gonna need to load it up, haul it to the...
Market or...
Yeah, somewhere. Because I don't expect y'all to drag all that stuff up in there.
No, no, and the expectation is household garbage, it's what you accumulate in normal living arrangements, right? And if you have a, you can buy a new couch and you put the old one out, we'll grab it. But when you're talking about, you know, moving a whole house out, that's gonna take some time. That's not something that, you know, we're gonna affect the service of other customers if we spend half the day on that, right?
Thirteen, though.
Yeah.
Thank you all for coming today.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
See ya.
See you later.
Thank you.
Alright, do we have any other, uh, items for discussion?
I have a short one. And being running not so late as we have been, under the, uh, additional business, our road construction, our contracts, whether it's a bridge or dirt work or road work, it seems like in the last couple of years, maybe two or three years since, uh, and I guess the schools all been under construction at some of this time, it seemed like every time we do a contract, we end up going over and we end up not being as happy with our service as we were when we signed that contract with those people. And, uh, I think that one of the things is that they get busier than they anticipated, or maybe that, not they anticipated, they bid on more jobs than they could handle all at one time and we are a sure thing. They know they're gonna get paid, so we get put, pushed to the back burner. And, uh, I just want, I know Mike is really tired of it. I know Tim catches it a lot, uh, like J and H. They have to try to come in here and buffer for other people's things. I want these construction companies that bid on our jobs to be aware that going forward, if you sign a document, mean it. And we are gonna mean our end of it. I am in District Four. If you want some work here, we want you. We've got great people. But no matter how good you are, if the work runs a year overboard or six months, whatever, people get disgruntled and they're rightfully so because they see your guys working somewhere else. So, just in short, I want to, whenever we do our contracts, I want real teeth in them and I want to monitor them and I want to be really strong with our pre-development conferences that we expect this to be ended by this day and if it's not, we're going to collect. That's all.
Greg, if that's all that, Steve, we have...
I couldn't agree more.
Right. I know, I mean, we, they have schooled us. I mean, they have made us get...
They made us this way.
Yes.
They made us this way.
That's an excellent point. That, I don't have anything to add because what you said is exactly what needs to happen. The, uh, the only, uh, somewhat of a deviation that I'll bring to, to your mind and ask you to think through with me is that there will be some projects, Steve, that are, are in keeping with what you're talking about, primarily the, the bridge projects, the major road construction, that type of thing. There will be some of those projects where we have eligibility to have some help on those with funding. Probably federal funds is coming through the Department of Transportation. And this is a painful subject for all of us. Uh, but the truth of the matter is, if we're going to get the, the monetary assistance on those projects, we get to swallow the poison pill with it unfortunately, uh, because DOT is gonna control the contract. And the, the DOT contract has language in it that is admittedly, I'm not, I'm not saying anything you don't already know, nor that the public should not have access to. The, the language of those contracts are very favorable to the contractor, not to the county.
And I think that's an understatement.
It's, yes, sir. I, I'm being as diplomatic as I can.
You, you've got nothing.
We, and I think we have learned, especially from the spillway, that when we do one of these, we need to let everybody know that the time is not under our control here. If we want their participation, we have to give up the time. I mean, let M.D. manage it and...
That's correct.
It may take a lot longer than we anticipate.
Yes, that's right. You know, it's nice for us to be able to say, we're gonna be able to do this project for twenty percent of local funding. Uh, but the flip side of the coin is, we all get to eat the you-know-what sandwich on the backside when they take advantage of that time schedule that's so favorable to them under the DOT regs. I, it's just totally mystifying that you can't charge a day in November, December, January, or February. I'm probably wrong about that. It's probably, whatever you charge a day, but December, January, February, you can't charge nothing. You get to charge in five days in March.
Oh, okay.
Why, why the entire project, it's either open?
Correct.
With it's open.
Yeah, so, uh, to, to tell somebody out in the public, uh, whether somebody's out there working from December one to February twenty-eighth, whether somebody's out there working, if you get them out there working, you just got a little extra measure of grace there, you can't charge them with a day. Not one day in that whole time. Now, somebody tell me why that's an appropriate arrangement under a contract. I, I'm just, I'm totally mystified by that, but yet there it is and that's what we get to live with. And nobody understands, what do you mean, you can't make them work? You, you can't contractually make them work? And DOT says, that's fine. And by the way, DOT says, it's your project, so you run your project. But we're gonna take all the tools, we're gonna take all of the hammer away from you and we're gonna control the hammer because you're not gonna mess with my contractor.
Because it's their money.
It's their money. So, it's a, it's an either or, we gotta pay the freight. Part of paying the freight is the unfortunate language we have to deal with. So, there's that one point, Steve, that I'll make. Now, for contracts, for projects, where we totally control the method of contracting, hey, it, it's a new day as far as I'm concerned. We need to, and, and Jay, you and I have talked about this too. We want to beef up, especially our liquidated, liquidated damages section. I want to warn you about one thing about LDs, and it's this. The, the law has been set for decades now. We cannot use liquidated damages provisions in a contract for purposes of punishment. The minute that you start enforcing liquidated damages, not because you've actually been damaged, but just because you don't like the fact that they're taking too long, you will lose your enforcement mechanism immediately. So, you have to set your LDs at a level that is commensurate with the quote, "amount of damages" that you have incurred. There has to be a correlation between those things. I'd love to be able to set LDs at five thousand a day. But nobody in, uh, the judicial setting would agree that we could establish how it is that it's cost to us five thousand a day for them to miss a day of work. Those things don't go together. I'd love to be able to say, it's gonna cost you five thousand a day if you miss this, if you miss this deadline, brother. I'd like to be able to do that. But the truth of the matter is, you're using that for purposes of punishment and not for an adequate representation of your damages. So, we want to set our LDs at a number that is representative and hurts just enough to incentivize them to wanna show up and get the project finished, okay?
There was one small thing. On our engineers and our inspectors that are on the ground, I want them to be fair. I don't mean this in any way other than that. I want them to go with our contract and our, uh, design, our plans. But hold these people's feet to the fire and know that we're gonna back you. Because once we start creeping over that hill, I mean, once you start sliding, it seems like that, uh, we have so many things that just show up. And well, we kind of talked about it and by the time it gets in here, the money is too much out of, I mean, to go back and fix what happened a month ago or six weeks ago, it costs way too much, stop the project, back it up, so we end up, we can live with it.
It's also...
Let's, let's be really strong and, and I don't mean severe, I mean fair.
Yep. It's, it's, it's amazing to me how, how small the world of heavy, uh, project contractors really is and how much information gets passed around in that small community. The minute that we wave off and go easy on one, get ready because you're gonna do it for the other six or eight that are in that world. I had a visit today from a representative of one of our larger contractors that frequently does work for Rankin County. Showed up on another matter, came to my office this morning before the board meeting. And he said, he asked about a upcoming project, was just curious when, when, when I thought maybe we'd be in a position to go to bid on that. And, uh, we talked about that for a few minutes. And then he asked specifically about the contractor that's on another part of that same project. And his question was, how much, how much more rope y'all gonna give him? How much longer y'all gonna let him just go?
No, I guarantee you, they know. They drink coffee in the same places sometimes.
That's correct. And so, how we do this needs to be, to your point, Steve, it needs to be uniform, consistent, fair, and across the board. Nobody gets a wave off. And I think part of that is gonna be you guys helping us. But, because if they sense that there's some, um, uh, that there's some wobbly knees in certain areas, they will, they will go right to that point of weakness and keep pushing us where we don't have any enforcement.
Well, and it's only fair. If we let Contractor X get away with something that's a fifty thousand or a hundred thousand and I'm over here, I'm Contractor Y, doing a similar thing and I, heck, yeah, I'm gonna save myself. That's a vacation for me and my family, my kids' family. That fifty thousand dollars goes a long way.
And it works in reverse, this same guy I was talking to this morning said, y'all rode me...
Yep.
Like a rented mule.
Oh, my goodness, we gave him so much time.
I didn't buy but about twenty percent of what he was saying, Jay, but there was some truth in it.
Yeah.
There was some truth in it.
Alright, look, I know, uh...
I'm done, I'm done.
Additional business also. We talked about this, we saw the emails that came out Friday on our spreadsheet. So, the, and, and here's why this, this bothers me. I, I just want you to know why it bothers me is because I don't know where the money's gonna be taken out of outside the two hundred thousand dollars for the bond for the Pierce Road Fire Station. So, the question, the problem, the problem that gets me is, I don't want it coming out of the road budget because that ends up affecting me at the reservoir. I don't care if we spend twenty million dollars on a fire station. Personally, if you want my honest opinion, I'd like every fire station in America to be twenty million dollars worth, as nice as it could be, because I live in those things. But when we set numbers, and I went back and Clayton wanted to go swimming on a Sunday afternoon and I said, I can't, I gotta go watch, two and a half hours worth of bond discussion in a May meeting. So, I did that and I went back to find out how the numbers came down. And it, it's, it's funny to watch it back a year ago. That's when I heard the Carl Franco's discussions and all that kind of stuff. But I, I guess my question to start with is first, if we go over what the bond set amount was and we had no intentions to it, and Slay's wording in that meeting was, we're not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. And Jerry said, no, don't worry, we're not even going to a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Well, we're, we're at two hundred and eighty thousand at this point.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, so, my question starts with, where does the eighty thousand come from? That's my first question. And how do we determine at some point when we go over the bond, where we pull the money from? And why, and, and why weren't we notified that we're over eighty thousand dollars of the bond? That the money's gotta come from somewhere. Who gets cut to pay the eighty thousand dollars? Because we still got, on this thing here that you sent out, another fifty to sixty thousand coming. So, we're gonna be at three fifty or so on this issue. Part of the discussion in that meeting was that we were, Jay made a motion to set it at a hundred and seventy-five thousand with sixty thousand coming from the fire account that would knock that down and keep it well below any of the numbers. So, we thought that project, in the discussion we had... So, we thought that project, in the discussion we had that day, was well under $200,000, that that money could be used for whatever that goes on. Now, we've blown, I'm assuming we've used that 60,000 from the fire fund that was instructed that day, and, is that right?
Not all of it, no. We have not.
So, that's what, what I don't want to happen, and my number one fear in this whole thing, is the money coming out of the road budget, or bridge budget, or somewhere else, that we all get penalized in other areas because we're over the number at this point. So, when I, when I go through this, I got a few other questions on your spreadsheet I'll ask, but let's start with that one.
Okay.
Where do we get the 80,000?
Sure, this, well, first, first of all, according to my bond's schedule, we are not over the 200,000. The remaining amount is in pending POs, which Mike...
Explain what that means to me.
Okay, that is, Mike has done a requisition, has given it to Bridget, and she has done a PO to the company. It hasn't been paid yet.
Okay, so we've paid 127,000 to date?
Well, since then, I balanced through May, so I have a new sheet for you. I balanced through May, and right now, yes, you, and right now, say on Pierce Road, we're at 166,641. So, we still have 33,000, I'm sorry, uh, 33,358 remaining to go. But there are outstanding purchase orders.
This is the overall bond thing, huh?
Yes, it is. But if you look down midway, Pierce Road Fire Station, parentheses says, Cleary, we had $200,000. To date through May, we have spent...
And, and I know the 200,000's right, 'cause I watched that on the meeting where we set that at 200,000.
And we have spent to date 166,64180, leaving us a balance here. But according to what Mike told me, we have several outstanding purchase orders that will make this amount, will exceed it.
All right, so, so I guess that's my question. When I go through and I look at the 127,000 on the spreadsheet you sent me, that's 20 grand in engineering fees, right? And then we go through 40,000, and it totals up to 127. This other number that says to be paid, um, these are the invoices that we've had work done, right? The work's already been done.
Uh, now, I, I take it it will be, because Mike said they should be paid on June the 15th, on our next docket.
Okay, so, all that, all that work's been done, right, Mike?
I don't know what you're looking at.
Ad camp, ad camp and war and pavement.
Yeah, yeah, that's all been done.
So, that's all been done. So, in a week, we're at 280,000.
Correct.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. You're not separating the road from the...
Right, that is correct. It, it's all in one, the road.
So, I guess that's my question. So, the road doesn't come out of the bond? The road's something different, or something separate?
When a purchase order, I'm not in the PO process, when, when Mike issue, has a purchase order issued, and it, he tells Bridget it's to come out of the bond money, when it comes across paid, it's paid from the bond money. And until it's paid, I don't see it to be able to reflect it on this sheet. Now, after that time, I can do a journal entry to move it to any place that you tell me that that is going to come from. So, if we end up over by $80,000, and you say, y'all don't want the road to be impacted, then you just have to tell me where I need to take that money from, and I can do a journal entry, and I can move those funds.
So, the, the current 128,000 we've spent has all come out of the bond?
Correct.
Okay. Where were you planning on taking this next 150,000 from?
It is scheduled to come from the bond, because the PO reflects it's going to come out of the bond.
All right, but I guess my question is, if the bond is capped at 200,000, I know it's capped on paper, how does the rest of it come out of there, when you can't get to 200,000 with all these other additional expenses?
Well, by the time it gets to me, it's out of there. I mean, because I don't requisition...
So, 280's coming out of the bond, right?
Yes, once they're paid.
When only 200,000 was authorized to come out of the bond. So, that's what's got me confused. That's what, that's what I don't understand. So, the other 80's gonna come from where?
Well, it's gonna come out of the bond, because that's where the purchase order has said that it's coming, and it's plugged into the computer that way.
And it's our, we gotta figure out what project we're gonna put.
But if y'all tell me to move it somewhere else, I can move it.
So, I guess, I guess, I guess that's my question. Who watches that number? Because when we set this sheet right here, with all these prices and numbers and bond caps, not to exceed it, and was clearly stated not to exceed 200,000, and you're telling me this additional money's gonna come out of that area?
I will, I watch it, but by the time it gets to me to calculate it in, it's paid. I mean, it's, it's paid at that point. It, I don't know until after the fact that we have exceeded the amount, because I don't know of open purchase orders that I have not requested.
So, who monitors this project? Who runs, who, who runs the Pierce Road Fire Station project? Anybody?
That's a hard question, because...
It's a terrible hard question, because we take $200,000 that we're gonna allocate to build a building, and nobody's in charge of supervising.
Daniel, I, um, I couldn't tell you what any asphalt costs and nothing when we talked about it. So, I couldn't tell you anything. I couldn't tell you anything about engineering. I told you about building, site, and that. I couldn't tell you, so honestly, that, I don't know where, about any engineering, uh, I don't know if, I don't know about that. No one talked about, I don't know about asphalt.
All right, so let me ask this question. So, when I go through, it says, nobody's overseeing the project. I drive down there Sunday, and you mentioned to me Thursday, whatever day we met, Thursday or Friday, I don't even know what day it was, that we had to do the clearing, the grubbing, and stuff that went on. And we did some other work other than what our lot was, right? Was that, who designed the clearing and grubbing project? Did the engineering do that? Did y'all do that, Tim?
We did put plans together, yes.
All right, so y'all, y'all did the drainage hydro study. So, understand, my fire mentality on drainage and water, and how water flows is kinda crazy. Like, might work. If we were fighting fire, and I look at you, and I'm on the nozzle, and I tell you this right here, what are you gonna do? If I do you this, what are you gonna do? You're gonna take my water up or down based on what my thumb looks like? Your study's deeper than that. So, I'm assuming in this $20,000, you did a drainage study on the water, right? So, did you go on to the private property in your study?
No, that's, that's...
How did we get to that side of it?
So, what, what we did was, we did, prepared a grading plan, which is how you handle the water on the site, within the limits of the county's property.
So, did we clear and grub outside the county's property?
No. No.
We didn't.
Not initially.
What do you mean initially?
So, we had, we had this plan, and it stayed with it, and then, once it got under construction, the adjacent property owner, there, there was a hill and then a valley behind it.
Right.
So, it, it was logical to go, to take the water that way, except it was off of the existing property. So, the adjacent property owner said, you can cut that hill down, it doesn't matter to me.
We're not talking about a monster hill. We're talking about a barn.
It's useless property that you can't access.
Right.
So, so then, that's when that was cut down to take the water a different direction.
But that wasn't in your design? So, we just did it?
I mean, we're, we're not gonna put a design together that's off, we can't...
Can't go off county property.
Oh, we did.
So, I guess, I guess that's kinda my question. Who oversees this whole project? Because I get hit every single day on going over here, can I level this, or can I move this? And Slay's got me under this shock collar, that if I get off county right of way or county property, that he's gonna kill me. And I don't want Slay to kill me. So, I guess my issue is, I feel like we're running wild on this thing.
Yeah, we're not talking about anything down, you don't know where the lines are, and I understand your defense, you don't know where any lines are. So, we didn't do anything like that.
So, we didn't go off county property?
We just pushed that where it would rain off the property.
We didn't, but you're telling me we didn't clear off county property?
We didn't go clear a whole bunch of land out.
I know a whole bunch of land.
Okay, uh, I don't know, I didn't tell you if it was 25 feet or 15 feet. But no, it's, it's in, uh, very...
We'll, we'll let them worry about that at some point.
They're making a mountain of mold hill on the, on the dirt on that part.
Back to my point, is who supervises the projects that come on this list? That's the question I've got.
Some of them have, will have contracts on them.
This one doesn't, does it?
No, it does not.
So, who oversees it? They took us to 280, that's gonna take us to 360.
All I can tell you is Mike issues the request for a purchase order.
That's not on that one list, that's what I'm trying to tell you.
It says where it's gonna come from.
It's not on the thing.
Explain it to me.
Well, because you're put, you're including the road and the, and everything all in one.
Yeah, we're not supposed to.
And it's not, no, it just clearly said 200 was for the fire station. But you, you're not going there, you're taking the whole thing.
I guess. So, none of this other stuff comes on the bond, so we can take out all the ad camp paving and stuff, so where'd that come from?
I'm just, I'm just giving you, telling you, explain to you the two difference, is all I'm telling you. I'm not telling you anything about where, I'm just saying it's two different things.
All right, so the fire station we built for in the bond was just the erecting of the building, nothing else?
Well, no, clearing and grubbing, and, and I don't know what else. I didn't figure anything about asphalt, and didn't, no, I'd figure engineering on it. So, if that was figured in there, that's where the 200 came from, huh?
Did you know we were gonna straighten the road?
Yeah, you did too.
Yeah, I did, and that's what I'm saying. How did we get to that level?
It wasn't in, it wasn't in the fire station deal.
Laura, do you understand my, my heartache and my heartburn with this whole thing?
I do.
Because the fire station we have in there right now is just empty. I mean, it's just a building.
I understand.
So...
But there again, I don't issue the requisitions.
No, no, I'm not talking about the fire, I'm talking about like sheet rock, I mean, as far as the...
Electrical.
Yeah, all that stuff, none of that stuff's been done. So, when I get down here and look at what you wrote on here, we're gonna reduce further expenses by allowing the maintenance department to finish the inside of the fire station, with the exception of electrical work. So...
That's what we initially planned anyway.
When, the other day, okay, my spreadsheet...
Who planned, is my question? I mean, I, who made the plan? And that's what I don't understand. Nobody's in charge of the project, are they?
Me and Mike talked about it, and we even said that thing, we could take them, let them do the, do the inside at some point in time. Exactly what we said, at some point in time, we let them do the inside.
I guess the part that, that drives me crazy is that when we say we're capping a bond project at $200,000, and if we gotta go over it, I would assume that you come back to the board and say, hey, we missed a number way off, that we're gonna be $400,000. Somebody oughta tell us.
Last week, when Mike came to my office and said, we're going to go over on a project, according to my sheet that I balanced, we're well under it. I have no idea that there are purchase orders sitting out there for asphalt. I have no idea that they're sitting out there. I can't just, I just don't go through the open POs.
Because we don't know who's in charge of the project.
So, Mike requisitioned it from that department and said, we're going to go over this, because I've got X, Y, and Z out there that will be paid against this project.
I, I'm with you. But, and then Steve even wrote his email, which is, is correct also, on the same point. The same thing happened to us on, I mean, you know, I guess my, my point is, we, we need better oversight of our money. That's the part that's driving me insane, that if we, if we set budgets, then we can take this thing and throw it away, 'cause it doesn't mean anything. 'Cause we're just gonna run over it, and then when we get done, run it over it, and then we'll just take it from somewhere else, and we'll stick it over here. I don't want it taken from the road fund, because I'm running as thin as I can possibly get on all the road work I gotta do at the reservoir. I don't care if, how it's spent, but the money that's in the road department, that has to be spent through all five districts, because we're not in a big district, should be at the joint agreement of three people on this board that the money's spent by.
I agree with that.
But if we're gonna pull 150 more thousand dollars, uh, to this project, and then we pull 250,000 to redo Wright, White Road twice down there, nobody knows nothing about. And, I mean, that was already paid. So, we double dipped and paid that money twice, nobody knew nothing about it. So, we're talking about, if you take this project and that, that's half a million dollars. And I got people that need work done in my area, just like I'm sure everybody else does as well. So, I just need the game plan on how to get stuff done. If this is the route we go do, then tell me. Nobody's in charge of nothing? I mean...
Look at, look at the one like on road maintenance facility, you had 300,000 out there. We're over by 182,645.
What sheet are you on now?
On the one I just gave y'all. If you'll look just down, three below the fire station, two or three, road maintenance facility, you had 300,000. To date, 482,645, it's been out of there. It's 182,645 over. Those are all done by purchase orders.
So, who oversees that project? I'm asking you, 'cause you're our county administrator. Somebody's gotta know the answer to that question.
Mike oversees that one. I mean, that's when he said that he, Dana keeps a spreadsheet of all their purchase orders.
She doesn't get it.
To know. I, I can't keep each one of these, except for what's on a contract to, to pay. Um, down here on Oak Grove, we were over by 105 there. Y'all knew we were going over that one? It came out of that one.
All right, go, go back to what you just said. We knew we were over, and we were advised of it. At some point, if we're gonna go over, somebody needs to be in charge of these projects, because this is $30 million worth of bond money, roughly, 25 million, whatever the number was. $30 million worth of bond money that somebody's gotta oversee, that we're just blowing through over. So, we're gonna come back in the end and say, oh, we'll just take it out of road, or we'll take it out of general, or we'll take it out somewhere else, or steal it from somebody else's bond project, whatever it is. Somebody has to allocate that the money's being tracked. This number here on this spreadsheet, when we say we're not gonna exceed 200, or $200,000 in the bond, can't go over that number.
That's right. And to date, what I'm seeing, what I've balanced to, it has not gone over. I only know that it's gone over because Mike told me it had gone over by POs that were issued that are outstanding. Otherwise, as far as my tracking goes, it's there. I'm balanced through May, some of these just went over. They, they just went over this time, but it's after the fact, when I get the information to put it on the sheet, to know that it is. Well, I don't oversee his road maintenance proj, projects.
All right, so the, the 100 and something thousand dollars worth of asphalt stuff.
How did we spend $100,000 in asphalt? I mean, we, we spend, how much is it to do one mile of asphalt?
About 120.
120,000?
So, we basically did a mile, how did we do that much asphalt on a fire station?
We had to go in and re-treat the subgrade, Jay. We had to lime, lime the subgrade, we had to put base back down and a surface back down. So, you, you had double, double the asphalt on this project right here.
Talk about the road, not the fire station.
Parking lot.
And that's what, that's what I guess I'm mixed up. Why should it even be tagged, why should it even be tagged with this bond? Why should the road even be tagged with this bond whatsoever?
I didn't issue the, the POs on it.
Because it is out of the bond.
Jerry said it's not, Jerry said, Jerry said it's not out of the bond. Yeah, it is.
The 200 was the only thing out of the bond.
So, the road went out of the bond, right?
We wouldn't have been doing that work.
I understand what it was allocated for, I don't know.
We wouldn't have been doing that work otherwise.
The what?
We would not have been doing the work otherwise.
I'm just telling you, the 200 was set for the fire station.
Fire station itself, what you said. So, all this asphalt work doesn't come out of the bond?
Yeah, it does. It needs to, in my opinion, it needs to. I mean, we wouldn't have spent...
It's kinda like when you go over on right of way, you know, we put in so much for right of way, and we all, we go over there.
But you, you didn't, but your intention wasn't to take it out of bond, the road, was it?
I don't know where it was coming from. I just know that we got done.
Well, that's kinda the problem. We gotta figure out where this stuff's coming from, and we do it.
We do a drainage something up there. I think we've gone over on some drainage up there.
Hey, and we've come back here every time. Hey, we're 50,000 over, I need to be real...
Then we go back, and you got, uh, we take money out of, uh, bridge to fix a, a emergency corver issue that we weren't figuring on.
But my point is, if you knew you were gonna take, did you know where you were gonna take that out of?
No.
So, you just said, go do it?
No, I didn't say go do it, dog.
Then who did it?
That was just part of the, what are you gonna do, straighten the road? You knew the, straightening the road, you knew that. We beat it to death, but you knew the road was gonna be straightened with it, 'cause that's one of your issues with the, uh, with the fire station. If you was down there yesterday, you should've, you weren't, but, uh, two minutes from the house, you could've run on down and said, hey...
I should've, should've stopped by. I was, I couldn't, I was stopped right here at this fire station.
All right, so...
So, I, I guess, I, I don't know what to do from this point. I don't, I don't know how, let me back up. Nobody else may care. But I want to know, be sure everybody understands this in all of our administration, that if we go over one of these budgets, whatever it is, somebody please just say, Daniel, instead of us spending $200,000, we're fixing to spend $2 million. Whatever it, whatever the number is, somebody let me know, because I'm the one that's gotta answer for the $30 million. That's all I ask.
And there again, I will have no way of knowing until it's paid for, because I haven't requisitioned it to be done.
Somebody needs to be in charge. At the end of the day, you're our county administrator, and somebody's gotta be in charge of every single one of these projects. It can't just be, well, here's a, here's a project, just somebody go do it, and let me know if we spent all the money right.
What's gonna have to happen is, they're gonna have to bring every requisition to me to get my signature on it, so I know what's gonna come out of there, if not, I have no idea.
Would, would we not have some kinda plan on somebody overseeing it?
Well, most time, Dan, most of the time, most of the time, we have a contract, you know?
But do you see what happened to us right here? We don't. If it's a non-contractual deal...
We, we should've addressed it better in beginning with either our maintenance department, or Mike Word, or, I mean, he had biggest, he had a pretty good piece of pie cut out of his budget for this. I mean, in retrospect, and I don't think that Laura, Laura can't be at every job and seat, but there's nobody in between the job and Laura on this one.
Right.
So, we can look down our list here and probably delineate which ones are the ones that are gonna be problematic to track, okay? I'm just looking down through here. Uh, the... The, the ones that are problematic to track, because they don't really have any contract associated with them, is gonna be your civil link, it's gonna be, uh, it's, you come down Pierce Road Fire Station, that's hard to believe, of course it is. Uh, that one's hard. But the rest of them, outside of those two right there, are gonna probably be, right, the road maintenance facility was one that, where there's lots and lots of moving parts and no global contract for a project. The rest of them are gonna be project contracts, I would expect. I don't know what's gonna happen on warning sirens, there's been some talk about that, but that'd be an example of one, where you would get a number on what each, each one of them costs. You get a contract to, to let them, one PO issued, and you're done with that one. The, some of these others, for instance, the, the contribution to the cities, notice that one up there, about seven down, eight down? That's, that's right in the check. So that's, that's done. Another one would be, uh, in Jay's district.
Yeah, I'm staying on top of that.
I, and, so that one's one, but that's an example of one.
Yep.
That is a classic example of one, where it's gotta be sort of monitored, somebody's gotta be kinda monitoring that.
I guess my question is, where, once we cap this at two hundred thousand, you don't have enough in the bond to pay the ad camp asphalt. So where is it coming from, is my question? You, you, you stop after another-
So you would rather it come out of the road?
No, 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 I don't want it coming out of the road.
Okay.
At all.
All right, so then-
Because that's gonna affect us, that we don't have any road money to do our project.
Okay. Daniel, there's only one practical response to it, and it's not, it's not gonna be a satisfactory response. If it's attenuated in the bond, if it's coming out of the bond, it's tracked according to the bond, then it's gotta come out of another bond project somewhere.
That's my point.
So that's where, and so you, what you're, basically what you're counting on at that point, is that you've overestimated somewhere?
So who's giving up a hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond money's my question?
That, that's gonna be whichever project is the last one, more than likely, which is the last bond.
Right, which will probably wind up as me, that's probably wind up as me, that's right.
In some cases, we have actually had money.
Don't be the last bond person.
Don't be the last, hey, do you understand? If you're the last bond project, you lose a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That'd be me.
No, it's probably gonna be me.
There are some cases we have had, come under.
Is this whole thing coming out of bond?
Hey, that handly project, is it finished?
No.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's gonna go over too, you know?
But we're not done.
So, I'm just saying, though, that's going over also, you know, so-
So when we go over, we come to the board and say, "Hey, we're going over the number."
Just about every one of these projects gonna go over, if you wanna really look at it, you know?
I'm with you.
All right.
So what do you wanna do?
I, I think at this point, at this point-
It's going over too?
It hadn't yet.
At this point, Daniel-
I don't know, we're not done yet.
You know, either, you know, it-
I'm assuming everything-
The way we've always done these, I've only done a few, you know, they just put that big number out there, and we draw out of it till it's gone, and then everything else comes out of cash on hand, either out of general county.
So the hundred and fifty thousand come out of cash on hand?
Hey, listen.
It's come out of cash?
No, listen, uh, on the, when we did the twenty million, you know, we did the bond several years ago, years ago, when we did the road stuff, that's where Andrew Chapel and, uh, Gunnar got left out, because in the end, it wasn't enough. So I'm just saying, that's the way it worked there. So my, I get what I'm getting at, no, what I'm getting at, sure, you got this, and it was marked, marked, marked here, and all this,